The Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. This meeting will be held in person, may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Members of the public with an interest at any portion or specific item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. Recording notice is as follows: According to Mass. General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Does anybody here care to? Nope. Okay. Would you all like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, we have a public hearing to open here for item number PB 2021-15, MS Harwich LLC owner. The applicant is the ID Sign Group Incorporated, which seeks approval for a, of a use special permit for signage pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-27.F. The property is located at 16 Sisson Road. Assessors parcel ID 21-P1. It's the Shaw's Market in the C-H-1 zoning districts. Please come right up and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Robert Sidell. I work for ID Sign Group. We're located in southeastern Massachusetts, kind of near Stony Hill College. And I'm here today to represent the company in regards for a special permit to allow wall signage to be placed at the Shaw's Market on Sisson Road.
Very good. Want us to take us through the material that you've submitted?
Yes. Great. What we're looking at doing here is there's signage that's proposed to go up. If you guys have been to the store recently, there's one sign there in banned area that's kind of blank, where all the others have dimensional letters that kind of say delicate distance and stuff like that. So when they remodeled it, they left that open and hopes of placing up the drive-up-and-go signage that would be placed on the front there. It would be non-illuminated. And it would help in regards to define what side of the parking lot as traffic enters to, to know where to head towards for the parking spots when it comes to the contactless grocery shopping that this store allows, which is basically, they have designated parking spots in the front. I was already out there earlier this afternoon and saw that they already have their eight spots in place. And this kind of, kind of guides people as they come into the parking lot, what side of the building they should be on. And this signage that's going to be placed here, it's 18 square footage. And that's kind of what I have in regards to a summary of what we're looking to do. And I don't know if anybody's used the program or not before, but while I was there, I kind of witnessed where the lady just drove up, parked, she dials the phone number, and then the kid comes out and works out real well, obviously, with the pandemic that we had, and places the groceries in her car, and she can drive off without ever coming into the store. So.
And I just wanted to double-check. The only mock-up that we have is this image here on the...
Correct, yes, sir. Yep. And that's the same one I have as well. Which if you look at the front of the store, where there's the A-frame roof, there's one sign banned area that already has dimensional letters, and then there's one to the left where there's like a single dormer above, and that's where the placement of this particular signage would be located. And nothing would change in regards to the, pylon signage would remain the same.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't we hear from Mr. Idman?
Yeah, thanks. Shaw's, or I think it was Star at the time, when it, when it switched over to Shaw's, did a relatively major remodel in about 2002 or so. Part of that remodel was signage. At that time, the zoning bylaw didn't have the same provisions it has today, and the existing signage exists by way of a dimensional variance for that signage. Since that time, the Harwich zoning bylaw has been amended, specifically the sign provisions of the bylaw, to allow signage in excess of that allowed for commercial properties by way of special permits. So that's the logic for not requiring some amendment to the, to the existing variance. I think it was wise to do from a planning and regulatory perspective, because you can see as with a property like this, to only allow 48 square feet per entrance facade would be unreasonable for a property like this. And then to get the reasonable signage, to require variance is difficult and probably unfair. So they're actually in here because they have signage in excess of what's allowed under the zoning bylaw, and they're looking to increase it further. So that's a special permit to the, to the planning board. But really, it's, they're just talking about this one sign here, which advertises this drive-and-go business. So I think there's particularly, particular benefits with this advertisement as well. It's advertising a service, so it allows some, some wayfinding mechanism, which is important for all signage. But it also advertises a business that was particularly important during the pandemic. In a sense, it's a contactless type of purchase. Other things we might look at under a special permit review for signage is particularly, is it appropriate to the area? Is it impactful from a visual perspective? And there are a few things that, that mitigate any potential visual impacts it might have, and I don't think it has visual impact. It's that significant vegetated front buffer that comes from the town and the Cape Cod Commission review back in 2002. The distance of the roadway, the public viewing perspective, to the building itself, it's several hundred feet. The building itself is large, so to get signage that is appropriate to the building might actually be a little larger. And the number of signs on a building this size, and I think there would be maybe five or six total, is appropriate to this size building. So staff's, staff's recommendation is to grant the special permit for this project, and I've set out a number of recommended findings and conditions for you. The only kind of special condition I would make of note is that if they, for some reason, if they want to substitute one of these signs, they really shouldn't, in my opinion, they shouldn't have to go back through the planning board, just go through the, the normal sign process. If they want to add additional signage, I think they should come back to the planning board to modify the special permit. So that's the, that's the purpose of that suggested or recommended condition, number four, on the, the second page of the staff report.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Mr. Harris?
Is, is the location of the sign also the, the location of the pickup place?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So it's not just an advertisement, it also gives direction?
Yes, it gives guidance to vehicles coming into the parking lot. That particular store has two entrances, one on both sides, and this one would be on the left side where the parking spots are located.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Is the parking area going to be in the fire lane?
No, sir. There's eight parking spots that are designated when I was there this afternoon, and on, that's on one side, and it's actually the first eight rows of a particular island on the opposite side, I believe is the handicap signs, or handicap parking, so they split them.
Do we want to entertain a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
So at this point, I'd move that the planning board vote to adopt the recommended findings and conditions of approval, set out here and grant a special permit for the proposed new wall sign at Shaw's Supermarket, Sisson Road, Harwich Port.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved? It is done?
Ricky White, Harwich Port is two words, so when this is written down, it'll be two words.
There's some debate about that around Cape Cod.
It's in the Chamber of Commerce, not with the town's website, and not with the post office.
I was always told that because we had a port, we actually had a port, it was a capital P, because we had the harbors. So it was two words. And if you didn't have a harbor, then it was one word together.
Like Chatta Port.
That's like Dennis Port with no harbor. I don't know how true that is, but that was the, that was the tale that was told to me years ago.
One port, two words.
Do I hear a motion on the board? So I think, so we're closed, and we have a motion, and that's been seconded and passed, so.
Awesome. I appreciate your time, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Sidell, for making the trip.
Thank you. I just put a little note, I actually lived down here, I met my wife down here back in the late 80s, early 90s. I was a Thompson Clambar, Witchmere, Harv, worker down here, so.
Miss Thompson.
So where are you going?
I got to come down here and go down memory lane for a little while, driving around, so many, so many memories of the area, and done so many things over the years, and truly miss the area quite a bit. But a lot of great times back then. I kind of miss the fact that they don't have that kind of, the kids these days don't have that kind of place to work where they can meet a lot of people from different parts of the country and state that come together at work for a summer. So it's kind of sad to see that part there, but it was very nice getting to meet you all this evening, and I appreciate you all's time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm afraid you won't find the Stone Horse Motel in the same level of disarray.
Yes. I actually lived there for a short time, and when I was back here, probably about three or four years ago, I saw it, and I was, I was kind of really wow, had a real wow factor to it, but it got to that point, but glad to see, I think it's a place for workers.
Dormitory, yeah.
Like a dormitory-style hotel, so that was awesome, that it got kind of utilized to bring some people to the area to help with summer jobs. So have a nice evening, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe trip.
So for the public meeting portion of the agenda, we have some new business, which is actually a continuation of conversations that were started in our last meeting, for which we did not have a quorum, so Mr. Idman?
Well, the first order of business is just to, for your annual election, so Alan, in your absence, we discussed a little bit that you would have no problem continuing to serve in your existing capacity as officer, the vice-chair and clerk. If that's acceptable to everybody, it could be as simple a motion as to...
To that end, I move that Alan continue to serve as our vice-chair slash clerk of the planning board.
Second.
You have a second?
Move to close nominations.
So why don't we have a vote, then? Or do we need a vote? I mean, I'm sure, yeah, well, I'm doing a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted B.
And that, and then the chair position.
Right. And I would be happy to serve, I don't know if we need any formalities about that, but if we do...
So I, I move that we reappoint Duncan Berry as our chairperson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's done.
We got a lot to be found.
Right, exactly.
And with that comes a big raise, too.
Yeah, and I, and I would have to find a replacement, too, so can't do that right now.
Oh, yeah, you just put that in, that rule in, so.
So board and department priorities, this is the good stuff.
Yeah, I carried this over from our, from our last meeting, so I want to hear from you. I also know from some short discussions with the select board and town administration that there's a particular interest in moving forward with the local comprehensive plan or the master plan. I think the last one was done about 2011. And then the one prior to that was done about 2000. First one was done, you know, some of you might remember, I don't know, late 1960s, which is actually one of the finest plans the town has done. So I think usually these plans, you know, you'd like to think they could be done sooner, but they take about two years. We have a budget of about $200,000, but when my experience, plans aren't best done by their, by consultants, they're best done by people in the town, and having the consultants assist with things like outreach, logistics, you know, and in today's day and age, even surveys, which is a kind of a part of outreach. So I would like to be, and I would like the planning board to be actively engaged in that. You know, as I look at the year 2010 or 2011 plan, it, you know, it's funny, the 2000 plan probably had too much to do with the Cape Cod Commission. The 2010 or 2011 plan almost read like a strategic plan for the town's operations.
It read like a business plan and not like a, like a local comprehensive plan.
Land use plan, yeah. So it's finding the balance between that. I think it's really important to not just make it a regional plan, the Cape Cod Commission's plan for what it wants to see of its member towns. But at the same time, it shouldn't be a so super-local that it's like a strategic business plan for your town either. So it's finding some balance in between will be important, but I guess it's just my way of telling you that I don't want to just take that money and hand it off to a consulting firm, have, have them draft something, put it on a shelf somewhere, because then it's really no good.
Then we don't have any skin in the game. I mean, that's the whole purpose of the effort, I think.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be terribly complicated. To me, the complexities, if you will, go with the engagement. It doesn't need to be a 400-page plan. Probably I would suggest that it not be, because then it's difficult to implement and use as much as we probably should as boards or town departments or even citizens in the town. It, you know, every time we wonder, you know, what direction should we take with a regulation or even a decision, that should kind of be our lodestar to go back to, you know, what's the town's vision? What are the town's policies in terms of land use? So it's a, it's a helpful document as well. You know, there's some benefit to the, in the Cape Cod Commission's regulations, there are some benefits provided by doing an LCP. But I think, you know, my perspective is it's better to do it just because it helps the town in its decision-making and its own visioning. The benefits you might get from the Cape Cod Commission and certification, I would suggest, are still helpful, but secondary.
And now in Yarmouth, they've been doing their own visioning in, as a lead-up to doing their own revised LCP, and has done surveys and has done push-calls for robocalls to remind people to either come to group sessions or to come to, you know, to find a, a survey site. So are those all things that you, those are the types of, of engagement that you're, you're thinking would work best for us, or?
Yeah, the types, exactly, and we already know that there are some kind of important groups or stakeholders in the town that I'm not sure have always been included. So we, we already have a hit list of people we know who are, who are there already.
Yep.
So not forget about, don't forget about those groups, but then to get some people, engage people who don't otherwise get engaged, because it really is the town's plan, it's the public's plan, it's not really the, the town officials' plan.
And is the language of this kind of a document, you were saying that it evolved from the 60s to the, you know, 50 years later, is the language of this going to be more or less directional in terms of desired outcomes, or is it going to be prescriptive about what will not be permitted kind of thing, or, or proscriptive, or?
Yeah, I don't think you want to be prescriptive in a policy document.
Right.
I think it, it states your values, your vision, and then the regulate, hopefully your regulations will be redrafted to be consistent with your vision. And of course, those regulations and then the bylaws can be prescriptive. But developing bylaws or regulations and furtherance of your land use vision document, your master plan, can be an implementation item or an action item stated in your, in your plan.
Okay.
When we as a board started talking about this probably five years ago, when I first was on the board, we had just adopted the housing production plan, that was just done, the open space and recreation plan. It seems like cycle-wise, it's time for all of those to get done, too. So are those things that you would anticipate getting done first, and then have those inform the comprehensive plan, or are they things that would all get done together, or?
Well, I think just practical reality, it's very difficult to do all these things. I mean, we don't have an assistant planner in the town either, so. Another way you could do it is have your master, in your master plan document, recognize that you did your housing production plan and open space plan five years ago, and you're going to be building off that plan with some new directive, policy, or intended action stated for your open space. And I don't expect open space to change dramatically.
Right.
I don't expect housing production to change dramatically, I expect maybe the, the tenor to change a little bit, given the housing crisis we have and the housing market we have, and maybe change some of the action items in there. But many of the realities of housing we've known for some time, even if you go back to the plans from the 1960s and 70s, you know, it's fun, it's kind of fun looking through them, because really, nothing is ever new.
Right.
Any of the problems people identified back then are the same today. We were really supposed to get started on sewer-ing back in the late 60s. I mean, there's no question in the 1967 plan that in the, in the six or seven years following that plan, that there would be a sewer facilities plan in West Harwich, Harwich Port, and then the Great Sand Lakes area, and it just wasn't done.
Mr. Chairman, a question for John. How is, you know, how the work is going to be structured? Has this whole responsibility been dumped in your lap or in the planning department's lap? Is it going to be an ad hoc committee put together by the selectmen? How, do we know?
Well, it's, it's interesting. The guidance comes from both the Cape Cod Commission Act, to the extent that this would be a local comprehensive plan certified under the Cape Cod Commission Act, as well as Chapter 41 of the general laws. The Chapter 41 of the general laws calls your kind of land use plan for the town a master plan, and directs the planning board to prepare that. Local comprehensive plans under the Cape Cod Commission Act, which are kind of the same as a master plan, same planning horizon of 10 years or so, and it's a land use plan, you're supposed to establish a planning committee, which might involve the planning board, but should also involve maybe ex officio members from the town, standing members of the general public, some members of the, the select board. So I, I think that's how it probably is done best, through having a special committee impaneled to work on the master plan or local comprehensive plan. I think in the first instance, it's kind of planning staff's job to be the quarterback to figure out how this is going to work. I mean, I, I'm incredibly grateful that there's a few hundred thousand dollars to assist with the process. I'm, I just want to be clear, I don't want to dump it on a consultant, I think that's a waste of time and money, and it doesn't really pick up what our values are as volunteers or citizens or, you know, officials in the town.
Plus, it's a healthy process for the town to go through in a civic way, public way.
I agree.
Builds morale, I would think ideally, that would be the objective.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And census and morale and, and, you know, ownership.
Right. I think the other important part of the plan would be, you know, planning was kind of absent from the comprehensive wastewater management plan. It was largely a technical document that was based on kind of Cape Cod Commission watershed requirements and regulations. There are elements of that plan that deal with land use controls, but it's pretty much a technical kind of wastewater plan. I think this, even though wastewater was certainly mentioned in the 2010 or 2011 plan, this is really is an opportunity, as I understand the select board may be kind of revisiting how to roll out the wastewater management plan from here. It's our opportunity to have kind of a higher planning perspective over all land use matters in the town, including wastewater and watershed management, to inform what, what the select board might do as the sewer authority with the comprehensive wastewater management plan going forward. And I think that would assist them and others in the public.
Great.
That's going to be a, that's going to be a big priority of mine. I've also kind of been tasked, though I'm not sure we have money encumbered or earmarked for this yet, looking at a e-permitting system to replace the one we have. The Acela system we have came, I'm sorry?
Call Ed Centio over in Yarmouth. We're in the middle of moving from Acela into Open Gov.
That's what we want to do.
We're supposed to go live probably mid-September.
Yeah.
So I admit freely, we've pilfered from everybody, and everybody pilfers from us back and forth, so the finance director over in Yarmouth, he can, can be very informative.
That'd be great, and I've, I've talked to Ed before.
He's an IT guy, too, so.
Well, that's the problem, I'm, I'm not. So I'm trying to tell people, like, it's really, you can try your hardest, but this is really a kind of a technical undertaking, too, and...
But it's pretty plug-and-play.
Okay.
So I have not done as much on the clerk's side as I would have liked to have done so far, but it's much more user-friendly than, than Acela. The couple of times I used Acela on our side, I was completely frustrated and, and ready to pull my hair out when I was just trying to look up some documents for a ZBA case. So this is much more straightforward, and, you know, you have a common username, a builder would have a common username from Barnes-Cible to P-Town, and...
And we don't have to deal with the accounts locally.
You, you don't, and, and like, and that's the nice part, is you can set up your workflow, you can set up your, your GIS flags to trigger your workflows in different places, you know, if an alcohol pouring license is within 500 feet of a church, it will trigger a flag that will trigger a workflow that will do approvals, and you can order it however you like. So it's, we're, we're knees-deep in it right now, so I would highly recommend, before you get going, give Ed a phone call, because he's, he's, he's very willing to share, and share alike.
That, that would be great, that's exactly the sort of thing we need. I also, it's not inexpensive, I think it's worth it in the long run, but it's not inexpensive.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's great, thanks for that offer. And I think eventually, with all these minor things we have to do, I, I think it's really the time to look through the zoning and subdivision regulations again, because there are, I think I gave you my shoreline theory of regulation, that there's been so much accretion over the years that it's hard to recognize the shoreline, the original shoreline anymore, and I think we need to have a little bit of erosion to take those pieces off. What it leads to with adding things rather than looking at the whole after a while is sometimes internal inconsistencies.
Right.
Or misplaced references. So there isn't one page I turn to now in the zoning bylaw that I say, well, we, it would be nice to change this word or that word to make things clearer, based on our zoning cases or based on members of the public who call in, or builders call in, or, or what have you. I mean, as, as an attorney and a regulator, that's actually more important to me, but I, I actually see the push to get the local comprehensive plan done. I, I mean, I think there's more of an appetite for that, but I guess I'm more of a nuts-and-bolts guy, so I'm kind of excited, I'd be excited to move ahead on the regulations and zoning bylaw.
Well, it seems from my brief experience, and you all can certainly speak to something more, but it seems like it's a kind of additive process, and that we keep, we lose track of kind of the DNA of things, because we've just keep, we remember what's the most recent thing, the most recent case, and I think, you know, it's just a good thing for us to be doing, I would imagine, to have a clear run at it.
Uh-huh.
So I'm all, I'm all for that, I think that makes a huge amount of sense, even if it sounds like it probably, there may be more of an appetite for a comprehensive plan, but I think this would be a better foundation for any kind of a planning sub, a superstructure on top of it.
Yeah, and a local comprehensive plan is really good at maybe looking at concepts and how you might change concepts in your regulations, but it doesn't do anything for just the, say, the awkward drafting that might be there.
Right.
Yeah, that's something you have to do independent, and I would, you know, we have a charter, I think it's called a Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, but they pretty much deal with the charter, and I think they were kind of defunct for a, a number of years, and they've gotten back together because of the charter. But it might, I, I'd like to talk with them as well to see whether they'd be interested in talking about more, you know, bylaw changes.
Well, because last year, didn't we have tables that were just completely like wackadoo? That, we didn't, like, we hadn't really looked at those things, and I think that's...
Well, but that's what happens, and I, John may disagree with me, but that's what happens when you have 17... Well, but that's what happens and I, John may disagree with me, but that's what happens when you have 17 different authors drafting different changes over time. You just, you know, if you're not, if you're not taking the overabundance of time to review everything when you're drafting one piece.
Right.
Then you do, you miss references, you, you don't cross-reference everything. And unfortunately, you know, when you're outsourcing a lot of it, what you have to do when you really don't have in, true in-house counsel, it happens. It happens all the time. And, and then you suffer the consequences of it later on. So, you know, to John's point, bylaw and charter review is really supposed to review every bylaw change or charter change before it goes to town meeting.
Right.
So there are, I'm sure there are a lot of changes.
Yeah.
Because it, it happens over time. I don't know, the last time this got recodified had to be more than 10 years ago, I would think.
Wow.
Yeah, I.
When they did the whole book.
Yeah. I'm not sure about recodify. I remember when things were first codified.
Yep.
Yeah, that was, I think, 2009, 2010, somewhere around there.
So that may have been the, that may have been the last, that was a full.
So those are kind of some of my priorities, but I wanted to give you the opportunity. I'm so pleased to see kind of a full complement of members, except for Joe, unfortunately. So, you know, we can always have discussions like this, but I wanted to at least provide this opportunity if you wanted to mention things to me.
I think you have a full plate ahead of you.
Yeah. I was going to say, it sounds like I want to make sure that you, that we hear your needs so that we can petition appropriately and apply pressure where you need it. So don't hesitate to call on us to get support and backup from us for what you need.
Okay. Great. Even money stuff?
Right, exactly.
I mean, I, you laugh, but a lot of it is.
It's true.
A lot, I mean, e-permitting is going to be all about the dollars.
Right.
And it's not really a luxury.
It's not.
Right.
It's always about the revenue.
Well, I wish it was about the revenue. For the departments, about, it's about cost.
Yeah.
The revenue is on the kind of general town side. We, the way our departments work is we're always looking at the costs.
I will say the thing that is great for us in, on the Yarmouth side is that it all ties everything's process through it. So if somebody hands you a check, staff is supposed to go in and put it in. So, so it, all of the ledgering gets done through the Open Gov, will get done through the Open Gov system right into the accounting system. So that's the, the nice part of it. Everybody's on one. And it triggers assigning somebody to a task. It triggers the workflow. You, up to the point that you can print that building permit, occupancy permit, alcohol, common victuals license, whatever it is. So.
Did the town keep Munis or did it go with Open Gov for a financial?
So keeping Munis, as far as I know right now, we use a lot of business objects and crystal reports together with Munis. But the, as far as, I'm trying to think, I had a call this morning on it. And we were talking about using, using payment codes that are going to then feed into the specific accounts so that you can gen, when you generate your reports. So we use, we have a seller now. And then in, in my office, we have something called City Hall Systems. It does some of our other kind of certificate purchases. So we'll generate a report through that and then load that into Munis separately. But wherever possible, we're putting everything on Open Gov. So Barnstable just went live with it maybe in the last three or four months.
Yeah. Builders are thrilled with Open Gov and Barnstable.
Oh, it's, it, it, it's so much more user-friendly and it's pretty straightforward to, you know, you develop your forms, you input your access, your forms, your, your payment. You put your payment where you want your payment to be, whether it's upfront or at the end. You assign it to the, the different reviews. So you could have building board of health and, and say licensing all reviewing at the same time. And then, you know, you can have, your review could halt every other review. Or it could, like, if it's a historic, historic could, could have to go first and nobody else could review it until historic had given approval. And then, or you can have them be concurrent, so, or consecutive. So it's, it's pretty nice if you've, if you haven't, if you've logged in to see it.
We're not even there yet.
Because you can, you can log into like a, like a Barnstable and just see how it works. And it's pretty straightforward. You know, you can dummy up an account and not, you know, not save the application as it goes through.
We've had presentations and it's nice because it's like TurboTax. It's all natural language and question-based.
Exactly. It's, it's pretty, lots of drop-down boxes and, you know, so you can use dropdowns instead of giving people the option to feed in the rest of the information. It's nice.
Yeah.
It'll be nice when it's done.
Yeah.
It's been a long project, though.
I'll definitely call Ed.
Thanks.
So that's what I have for that.
Okay. And I wanted to also ask about the signature and endorsement material here.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm happy to get to that. I, I think we had minutes first.
Do we have minutes first?
We can move.
Did everybody get a chance to move through the minutes? I think the last one's pretty straightforward.
I move that we vote to approve the minutes of July 13th. Do we have the 13th?
We have a 13th and a 27th.
And the July 27th, 2021.
Couple of typos in the 27th in the last two paragraphs.
Okay.
Okay.
Very parking setbacks thought, though it was not included, rather than thought.
Yep.
Okay.
And then third line amendment, no move forward, not move forward.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to say as amended.
Throw one more amendment. On July 27th.
So I move that we vote to approve the minutes of July 13th and July 27th as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? All right. For advisory opinions. This the material that?
Yeah, we, we don't have any, I don't have any advisory.
So the procedural policy, then, signature plans, decisions and other documents to evidence the board's votes.
Yeah, I can walk you through that. This is just a, this is just a draft. We discussed a little bit about it when we, we really couldn't take any action because we didn't have a quorum. And I did decide for your consideration to do some, to present something to you in terms of the minutes. But I think maybe Duncan, you characterized this as well as anybody could have last time. These are all contingencies. So what I tried to articulate is what the normal practice is. And in some unusual or extraordinary circumstance, a contingency to have some Plan B, so to speak. So if we start with the first paragraph, and I'm going to be doing a lot of just reading to you, but the normal practice is when the planning board has voted to approve or endorse a plan, standard practice is that a majority of board members will sign said plan. In the event that a majority of board members is not available to timely sign, then the board chair, vice chair slash clerk, or town planner, planning director are authorized to sign said plan. Now, this would be for A and Rs or for definitive subdivision plans. And said signature may be relied on as conclusive evidence of the board's unavailability to have signed, timely signed. And that's important because it's not just a matter of being alternative. It's not saying this person can sign or this person can sign. It's person B can only sign if person A was unavailable. So somebody, especially in real estate, like a plan recorded at the registry of deeds, wants to know whether they can rely on that signature. Another reason, if you do, you know, ultimately want to go along with this, it's also why I have an acknowledgement statement, because this is something that not only we may want as policy, but we may want to record at the registry of deeds. And I feel comfortable with one because of course you've always, you've taken a vote. And really what the signature always does, especially with your decisions, is just memorialize that vote. So that's the thinking with that one. Number two, when the planning board has voted on a matter, standard practice is that the board chair or vice chair, I should actually put in here clerk, will normally sign the written decision, determination or other document evidencing the vote of the board. In the event that the board chair or vice chair clerk are not available to timely sign, then the town planner, planning directors authorized to sign said document and said signature may be relied on as conclusive evidence of the board chair or vice chair clerk's unavailability to have timely signed. Of course, this is a contingency, but this would most likely be the case in, say, a decision, which the board has voted on, but for some reason COVID otherwise, that the, you know, chair or vice chair clerk can't come in and sign. The last is, and I, I know you expressed the interest in continuing to approve minutes as you've done. So certainly that would still be the default. The planning board's standard practice for approving minutes is to do so by majority vote of the board as an agenda item at a duly noticed public meeting. In the event that circumstances or exigencies would render the standard practice of approving minutes untimely impracticable or infeasible, minutes may be approved by review and signature by the board chair or vice chair clerk outside a public meeting of the board. And said signature may be relied on as conclusive evidence that circumstances or exigencies would have rendered the board's standard practice of approving minutes untimely impracticable or infeasible.
Are you anticipating recording one of these when the, when the exigencies happen? Or are you expecting, are you anticipating to put this on record and have this just be?
Just put this on record now. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, what would be a, what would be a timely length of, what would be the timely length of time?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a good question. You could decide what that might, might be. I, I.
Working days or?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want to get that specific, you can, you know, you can do that. You don't have to adopt any of these things. You know, I just, I, especially after COVID, I saw, and, you know, for other matters, getting sometimes people to come in and sign, especially where, you know, there might be some legal need to have a document recorded or have minutes approved. And I understand a term like untimely is wiggly. But I've also found that being too specific.
Right.
Kind of defeats the whole purpose why you would have a contingency like this. I mean, if there's any lack of comfort on this, I just wouldn't approve any of it.
Well, I would think one consideration of timeliness would be that we should be able to conclude the business of a, any given meeting prior to the opening of a new meeting, right? So if we can't get something done in two weeks' worth of time, I mean, that's, that's, I would think that would be a burden on the applicant.
Well, I would say your minutes, your minutes are required to be approved under, under the records law within 30 days.
Right.
Or your next, you know, your next meeting.
But here, like in A and R, all this kind of stuff, I would.
That's what I was, that's what I was going for, Mary. So untimely to me meant sufficient to meet existing law.
Yeah.
Whether it's minutes, whether it's plans. You know, I'm thinking of a situation where, even Elaine told me of a situation once where the planning board had voted on a particular plan, but those same members were no longer members of the planning board. So you had to rehear the matter again. Because there, there's no outstanding policy that even if the votes were there, the members still had to sign that plan. So it's unusual circumstances like that to avoid legal problems, but I understand Bill's hesitation too. I, you know, I, I can't promise you any particular time than a promise that we want to avoid legal problems. And I think then getting specific with it defeats the whole purpose.
Some people's timely manner would be, I want it tomorrow.
Right.
And others will say, well, by the time the, the board meets again, I want it done.
Yeah.
So that's my worry.
I think it would be the board, but I think the, it would be the board's timeliness, not the timeliness for an applicant or convenience. Yeah. Yeah, I would never, I mean, as a, clearly, I would never look at, well, this is timely for you, developer, so we'll sign it. I think it would be untimely in terms of the board's timelines or, or pressures. But if you want me to, I can look at that language. If you're interested in continuing to pursue this, I can come up with some other language to propose to you, to try to address that. Gearing that standard back to the board rather than, you know, having a developer determine what the standard is because they want the decision, you know, tomorrow.
12 hours.
Right. Timeliness shouldn't be because they have a real estate closing and they didn't, you know, they didn't come in, they didn't come in early enough to get it done.
Right.
These have to do with the board's interest.
Right. A special permit, you know, a special permit to open, you know, for a new, or a new site plan, special permit because they want to open July 4th and they came in on June 30th for, you know, for their first hearing. I think it's different than, than like not being able to get to the minute, not having been able to approve minutes within 30 days.
Right.
Also goes.
Minutes are actually the thing that I'm more hung up on, on than any of them. I don't know why. Maybe it's just, it's just me.
To a applicant who's held on to his papers, didn't ask for them to be signed until a year later. And that's when you had that overlap on members not being there.
Well, I think we ought to definitely have it in our hip pocket. I mean, now that we're looking at the possible flare-up again, I mean, I need to just be prudent.
I think if we clear the language up, personally, I think if we just clear it up so that it's clear that it's.
Board time.
To protect the board's interests.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
And tie it to.
But I think it makes sense.
To the, the legal requirement for the minutes or whatever the right language might be. And that way, it kind of covers all those bases.
To me, the alternative is to then just record it every time there's a, there's a strange, you know. If you've, if you've signed it because of an exigency, then, then they get a copy of the vote that says it, of the policy along with it to record with it. And then they're not, I'm thinking from a title examiner's perspective, it'd be easier to find it that way than to, than to be researching back, like, just food for thought, but.
Yeah, I didn't want to complicate anything and I'm not, it's not like some power grab and I really, it's just, I'm, I'm.
Who's worried about that?
It's a convenience. Yeah.
Don't worry about the power grab.
You could stunning, isn't it? Like with, with a virtual meetings, you could always say, I need to get this signed by all the members. If you cannot come in and sign, let's take a vote on.
Right.
The planner, planner.
So we could enact this on a.
Take that vote every single meeting, like with every single action.
But we could build that, couldn't we build that into the agenda and say, we're going for the, for the, for this, the cases that we're going to be listening to this evening, these are all going to be subject to the, whatever policy we have because of the current conditions. And, you know, until we, is it that kind of a scenario that we would announce in advance so that we could accommodate?
Yeah, I mean, every motion you make could say, and we delegate to the, the chair, vice chair clerk to sign the plan on behalf of the board. Or sometimes things, though, can intercede between the vote of the board and the time to sign.
Right.
That you can anticipate when you take the, the vote. So I'll, I'll work on some language. If you still are uncomfortable in any way, just don't, this isn't a push. Let's kind of come up with something for you to, to think about and consider. If you're at all uncomfortable, just say, you know, we're, we'll just keep it as we have.
I like the alternative for staff too, because, I mean, you never know when you're, you know, going to be incapacitated and kicking in yourselves, right?
Exactly.
So that makes sense.
Thank you very much for that.
Sure.
Now, do we have any briefings on other committees? I don't think we have any correspondence. Any other sports?
CDC isn't meeting. We were supposed to meet this Thursday, but we postponed until next month. So nothing to report in that respect, except that. next month, so nothing to report in that respect, except that applications for the 2022 rounds will, are due October 1st, which is, I believe, the Friday, so that we do here Friday by 4:00 PM, close of business. Rules are on the CPC page for what's required for submission.
I have one very brief briefing for you. Under state law, any permit in the town made under Chapter 91 of the general laws basically needs to be reported to the planning board, so I'm in receipt of a Chapter 91 application, just telling you I've received that in, it's down on Neal Road in Harwich, and the purpose of Chapter 91 is basically where you have state waters or with, with public trust rights in them, somebody wants to put a private structure, do a private activity, you basically have to mitigate for that activity, because you have this private interest that's being undertaken in this public trust area. This particular case, it's a, a private groin in a beach that's being rebuilt, new sediment and the groin is being rebuilt. Usually the way the state handles that is provide some mitigation through public access, like over the groin itself, because there are public rights in what's called the intertidal zone, between the mean, low and, and high water mark, you can, I'm sure you've heard all this fish foul and navigate, so long as you don't touch the bottom when you're navigating, and to mitigate for those public trust rights, usually you just have to allow anybody who's in the water to, to go over that groin, but as a matter of the statute, the planning board needs to be, provided a copy of the Chapter 91 permit, I have that. Elaine tells me some years ago, the planning board had no other interest in hearing a lengthy discussion, discussion of these Chapter 91s or getting copies of the permits, but I'm happy to put it in your packets if you are interested or talking about it more.
I'm agnostic, but anybody else? Is this anything you all have had experience with?
Well, there are all the dock permits and anything into a, into a, into a way.
It's easy enough to get your copies electronically or in paper, I don't mind doing it, but.
As long as you're getting them.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Because we don't have to take action on them, right? Because we're not the, we're not the granting authority.
No, the interesting thing is the, the two, as the town planner or the planning liaison, I have to acknowledge receipt that it has been sent to the town's planning board. At the same time, there's really no authority under the law for the planning board to have any real teeth, I guess you could provide a, a comment back to the, the state relative to the Chapter 91 interests, and then the building commissioner, building official in the town also has to certify that whatever activity there is, is consistent with local zoning. So that's, that has a little more teeth than.
Gotcha.
The planner stuff, but yeah, I can get you a copy, Bill, if you're interested.
Okay, I think that takes care of our agenda for the evening, for your motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So Arthur, is this correct that this is your last meeting with us?